I'll have a brief vacation and then we'll have a pleasant week. Lord, we thank you for this afternoon for the many gifts you provide our town, our nation and the world. Only you can change the hearts of men when they wander from the path you have defined while here on earth. We ask for forgiveness when we take the gifts you provide for granted and ask you to open our hearts to all our brothers and sisters in spite of their differing faiths, political opinions, nationalities, and viewpoints. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now call the special meeting this Thursday, January 11th, to conduct the business that was canceled at the regular schedule of town council meeting that is scheduled for January 9th. Do we, we don't need an approval on that, do we? The item four, everybody's had a chance to, it was a huge packet, just, well, two, a lot of papers. I would like to, first, Jonathan Green here represents Fort Eggers. In your packet, we have an employment contract and I would like to execute that contract. But first, if anybody has any questions or comments about it.
We're always happy to raise our hands. It's already.
What is the, the instrument has to be pre-audited in accordance with the requirements. What does that mean?
So contracts that the municipalities sign are supposed to be pre-audited. If not, they can be subject to collateral attack and be avoided.
Audited by whom?
The financial officer.
Of the town?
Yes. So we, we put that as standard on all of our municipal contracts. Forrest got a good word story up here about some things he was able to get out from under, but we don't want that to happen to you.
Okay. I'm moving to the second. You okay with that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. Happy to be here.
Great. Item number five, are there any changes? Additions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Item number six, consent agenda. approval of the minutes for the mid-year budget review meetings of December 6th and the town council meeting on December 12th. Are there any changes or additions or things or comments on that before we accept the motion to approve? If not, I accept the motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number seven, citizens' comments. Have they heard?
Good evening. Mary Dillon, Chair 526, Black Island. A copy of this will be given to Ms. Ralph. But Henry Williams and I continue to request reexamination of the rise in charges for water, especially beginning at 4,500 gallons. Progress has been made with recording of town council meetings, an updated website, and the text and email orders. In an effort to further encourage community participation, I challenge the council to add more opportunities for stakeholders to engage in their local government. This is important because of the seasonal differences in population, work schedules, family commitments, and other factors that could impact the open share and buy views and concerns. An online inspection of procedures of councils in North Carolina down Chapel Hill serves as an example of what could be done in Seven Devils. They offer several options to comment at participating town council meetings, including the following. Individuals may submit written material in hard copy to a town clerk. He will copy it and provide a statement to the council and include it in the record. An individual may submit an email to the town clerk. The town clerk will include it in the record. An individual can present a statement personally and it will automatically be included in the recording of the meeting. Someone else can present a statement or individuals behalf of the meeting by reading it aloud and it will automatically become part of the record. Individual may distribute a copy of that council meeting and make additional comments as needed. I ask the council to consider any of the options not already in place and include each on the town's site, such as the "how to" section. In addition, provide the individual with an acknowledgement. Their communication, idea, or concern has been received, which council member will respond. Time frame to expect a response to a submitted statement and the delivery method. Whether by phone, email, at next council meeting, or other. Finally, thanks again to our public works department for maintaining roadways during recent litter events and for the police and fire departments for ongoing monitoring of conditions to keep the town staff, residents, and the visitors safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. She ran. First, I want to thank Jonathan and the team for all the roadwork the last two weeks. That's been a challenge. You guys think that's a great job. And I appreciate it. Thank you very much. After talking to several people in the mountain, it seems to be a little bit of a disconnect regarding the budget. And I think I might have some solutions hopefully. I hate to complain without having solutions. But over a year ago, September 2022, council member Bob Bridges said he supports town councils with their decision-making while encouraging them to maintain fiscal conservative. About two weeks later after that, we all received, at least all my neighbors said they received tax increases of 50%, over 50% on their bill. And if you look at the town budget for the last three years from your website, the budget increased not 10, not 20, not 30, but 90% increase, nine zero, over the last three years. Now, to help us get on the same page, like I say, I'm not sure where councilman Bridges was coming from, but if you look at the definition from Wikipedia, one I have, you know, it's the same definition I always use the last four years. Fiscal conservatives advocate for tax cuts, not tax rate cuts. Tax cuts, there's a huge difference. It also advocates for reduced government spending. Now, a 50% tax increase and a 90% increase to the town budget, by anyone's definition, it's not fiscally conservative, anyone's. And I'll make it work you while if you can find one respected banker, one respected economist that would say 50% increase, tax increase, or a 90% increase to the town budget is fiscally conservative, I'll give everyone this room for their thoughts. It doesn't exist. It just doesn't exist. However, the disconnect to me, you know, the past two years have been difficult for all of us. Inflation's been high, very high, gas, groceries. Everyone I know, we've all had to tap, tighten our buckles. It's been difficult and challenging. At the same time, budget down here, just 90% of that. So I think it'd be great that the town council and the town would get together and be on the same page when it comes to budget and, and believe on color fiscal conservative. However, I think there is a solution. You know, Bob is a banker. And I'm hoping in the future, this coming August or September, when the budget comes out and the tax bills go out, that Bob can be a leader on the town council and block the law. You know, you're talking about being fiscally conservative, let's do that then and share the struggles we have. And, and I look forward to hopefully a significant tax cut and reduction in the town budget. That's being fiscally conservative. And I'll be the first one down here to congratulate and thank you guys and especially Bob. So I appreciate your time. Thanks again for the roadwork. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone else?
No. I'm looking to David Smith about, I didn't want to break my streak of talking fire safety over the last couple of council meetings. With this cold, cold, cold weather that's going to be showing up in at least a few days from now, please be safe. There is any possibility that we are feeling comfortable. I don't hesitate to call fire department, unfortunately. I have been on calls where I should have called you hours ago.
Yeah.
So again, just be safe. I didn't want to break my streak because it's been working so bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's no other citizens' comments. Moving on to poll business. We ran into, ran into a problem with the holidays as far as giving the right notification time-wise with the newspaper for this, for the public hearing. So we, we are going to reschedule the public hearing for February 13th. And these are for the amendments to the UDO and the nuisance ordinance. So I'll read a motion to reschedule that. This is, okay. All those in favor? Okay, item number nine, new business aid. The town attorney litigation matters. I'm going, I'm going to read this. I'm sure everybody else has read that. Does anybody have any comments before I?
Reading the resolution?
Yeah, yeah, I did have a question about the resolution.
It, it seems to me, and Jonathan, correct me if I'm, if I'm erring here. It seems to me that the town attorney, based on the town attorney is authorized to initiate and do that, can initiate legal action unilaterally. I know you won't, but way it's stated, can you?
In theory, yes.
Okay. Is this wording?
Let me, let me, if it's okay, if I can just, please. Pedal the history. So in Town Midland versus Harrell, the case that we cited at the first part of that, a lawsuit was kicked because the court found that the ordinance required a, no, required a new ordinance. It required, the town was required to actually pass an ordinance authorizing the litigation.
Specifically?
Specifically. Now, that doesn't necessarily apply to each and everything, but it could apply to a lot. And this is new case law. Lots of attorneys are going to be, hey, maybe I can make my client happy and kick this. And so I understand y'all have been involved with some litigation. Let's say that Jonathan called me and said, hey, we have X, Y, Z. We need to proceed with this. You know, then we would have to wait for a council meeting. We would have to have everything done at that council meeting before I could start to take action. So this is designed to give our firm the authority to act at the behest of the town manager.
That's the key that I'm driving at right here. Is it better to say upon the direction of the town manager, the mayor or mayor pro temp, the town attorney is authorized? I mean, you just described what I'm talking about putting in, in that sentence. Don't take away your unilateral opportunity. And does that create a problem with the resolution?
I think it's safest as written. If, if that's a, if that's something you're uncomfortable with, we'd be happy to table this for tonight and go back and I could do some research and give you a hard answer. My gut is that we, I think it would be more likely to hold up as written. But I don't want to tell you that without having researched that specific issue.
Yeah. Again, I'm not worried about it holding up. My issue is the town is the one that needs to initiate legal action through you.
Well, in my 25-plus years, I've never.
No, I understand it won't happen, but it can. To me, theoretically it can. So that's my, that's the discussion point that I wanted to bring up to council is that the way it's written theoretically, and it won't happen, but the way it's written, it can happen.
I would have a problem with how it's written. I would take a motion to approve it as written. My understanding concern. It's just tightening things up.
Yeah, I get it.
I'm fine either way. We serve at the pleasure of the council.
Any other comments?
What particular paragraph?
Number one. Number one, it says, therefore, it resolves the town council seven devils as follows. The town attorney is authorized to initiate. Well, we just got through saying that from an example standpoint, it'll be initiated based on a telephone call from the town manager.
There's something here. There's also stand-up on, on the page where it says, attorney deemed advisable in best interests of the town.
Again, that's the attorney's decision, not the town's decision. Again, it, it, I get caught up on court smith a lot and I, I.
I can go with you on that. I do a little bit myself.
And so my statement and concern for the discussion point for town council is, is the procedure is the town manager will call on behalf of the town for you to initiate. And they don't say that. And, and I know that we have found our ordinances to be less than specific and has created some problems. And so that's my, my point for the town council to discuss and decide.
Well, Jonathan would never, without any conversation with me, begin legal proceedings with our attorney, registered.
Correct.
So I don't.
But it doesn't say anything about Jonathan calling.
Bob is saying theoretically, he could go and.
And not he, after the town attorney came.
The town attorney could go out and.
See, I think this is a good idea.
And sue somebody or whatever. They could, they could send a message to the town and maybe you go.
In the paragraph before, we can redirect it. We find out that happens, we can redirect it in terms of, but again, my, my concern is that the wording in some of our ordinances is creating problems for us. And this would eliminate, totally eliminate any kind of concern.
Providing comfort, the bar would probably have some very direct thoughts on us finding unauthorized litigation.
Correct.
But yes, this is designed to be as streamlined as possible.
You understand?
The council is concerned with that. I can go back, do some research and report back.
I'm just bringing it up for the council to discuss.
This is something, this is something that you guys do with all your.
Yes.
This is, this is what everyone assigned.
The other municipality that I personally represent has signed this and my understanding is that the others that we represent as a part of the lawsuit.
But it's also avoiding the idea that we have to, every time you're going to do something, you need a resolution to this.
Designed for.
Well, we have to have a council meeting for that. It's what we're trying to eliminate.
It's also designed to reduce mistakes because things get in a hurry. You know, we're all busy. We try to do things and at some point we realize or we forgot to think it to the town council and that could be proven unfortunate.
I had no problem with my resolution. It's just that who directs it?
Well, I'm okay with the, myself, I'm okay with the resolution the way it is.
I heard a motion.
Make a motion. I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's fine.
He's in favor.
He's in favor.
Okay, my purpose was for discussion.
Okay, y'all. I'll read it. This is a resolution for the town attorney to act on behalf of the town seven devils. It's resolution number 2024-01. Whereas the town seven devils, the town, is a municipal corporation embodying politics of the state of North Carolina. Whereas pursuant to general statute 168-173, the town appoints an attorney who serves at the town's discretion as its legal advisor. And whereas general statute 168-12 provides that all powers, functions, rights, privileges, and immunities of the town shall be exercised by the town council, who shall act by ordinance or resolution. Whereas the North Carolina Supreme Court in the town of Midland versus Harrell concluded that the town council may delegate the authority to initiate legal proceedings on behalf of the town, which amaze you by ordinance or resolution. Whereas the authority to file an action on behalf of the town is jurisdictional in nature and the passing of this resolution will provide for more efficient operation of the town and avoid reluctant defendants from imposing procedural delays and hurdles in the enforcement of the town ordinances and the actions which are in the best interests of the town. Whereas the town council retains the right to redirect the town attorney on any legal matters which are being pursued by the town as the town council deems just wise and appropriate. Now therefore be resolved by the town council or the town seven devils as follows. Item one, the town attorney is authorized to initiate and pursue legal action on behalf of the town for the enforcement of ordinances, the collection of fines, fees, taxes, and other sums due and owing to the town without need of further resolution or ordinance to be adopted by the town council. And two, the town is authorized to initiate and pursue legal action for the town. I'm sorry. Item two, the town attorney is authorized to initiate and pursue legal action for the town on any matter including but not limited to eminent domain, contractual breaches, declaratory action, and such other matters as the town attorney deems advisable and in the best interests of the town without need of further resolution or ordinance to be adopted by the town council. And three, the town attorney is authorized in his discretion to retain outside counsel to represent the town in various litigation matters as deemed appropriate by the town attorney without need of further resolution or ordinance to be adopted by the town council. Adopted this ninth day of January 2024.
Yeah.
I got the resolution edited today.
Do you love it?
Yes.
Both places at your front end. Thank you. Item B. The water shortage response. We got that. But the Jonathan, this is a, every five years we have to submit this.
The town is required to submit a water reduction plan with the state of North Carolina. I put the wrong document in your packet. We have the correct document now, but it was too late to get the resolution changed. So if, if council is okay with, it's due in June of this year. So if council is okay with table on that until next month, I'll give you the correct information and the resolution will be correct.
The motion to table.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
And our town attorney has taken a look at some of our ordinances and already made some recommendations. So that's something else we'll be working on in the near future.
Item C, board of adjustment, fifth and sixth appointment was, was made for Mark Cuffrel. You fill in that seat.
The seat is, so, and we have an adjustment. And Mark Cuffrel was in the original, when we submitted all the applications for appointments, the whole bunch of them, a month ago, he was in that lineup. He had submitted one of them.
Did he even motion to approve his appointment?
Quick question. Bob, you said you, you know people, you know him.
I know his background, yeah. And I know people who.
I don't know him personally.
Yeah. And I know people whose judgment I value highly. Just a syndicate that you.
You, you, you're a very good candidate.
A very good candidate. I'm sorry.
Motion? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Jonathan, administrative update.
Okay, this is not included in your packet, but since it was brought up, it's just a comment. If you guys really just committed to the risks that, the concern says there's no longer with us. But anybody, if you have a question about the budget, please come see me. I ate lunch and I used the gym and other than that, I'm usually in my office. I would love to sit down and get your money. I'll tell you exactly where it's going. And the reason it looks like our budget is so inflated is we have $1.2 million in grant money this year. So obviously, a budget our size, when you add $1.2 million of grant money that has to be accounted for in the budget, it looks like it's been inflated.
Well, $700,000 will inflate our one and a half million dollar budget.
We have $1.2 million in grant money in the wallet this year. So that's why, that's why, that's why our expenditures are much higher is because we have to account for the receiving and the expenses of that money. If anybody watching today or any of you guys here in the audience, please come see me if you have a question. I'd love to talk about it at your money. I'll tell you exactly where it goes and where we'll get it from. So with that, now that we will get to the administrative update. We had our lock night celebration in December. It was very well attended and almost all the feedback was positive. So I think that's something we'll continue in the future. We had 84 participants. We received our second installment of Powell funds for $19,973 and change. So that brings our total for the year for Powell money, which is huge to maintain and improve by our existing town. That brings the total for this year's $36,204.80. For our seven devils first responders are enrolled in EMT training that started yesterday, actually. So in about two months, we should have three more EMTs at the top. Or Tuesday. Oh, that wasn't yesterday. Two days ago. I'm sorry. Okay, Avery County has been downgraded to a tier-two development county. So.
Since here, I agree.
I'm interested.
Okay.
It's been a rough month. So they were, they were a three. They've been downgraded to a two. So Watauga County remains a tier-two county. So stay up to date with town news and weather. Please subscribe to our email and text notification list on the website. We have a lot of participation now. I would like to see that grow even further so that we can get the news to people the fastest and best way we can.
How many people do we have now?
We have around, I'm going to estimate 125.
It's grown exponentially since we started talking about it, but I want to keep it out there. Now our, all of our town council meetings are recorded and archived. So if you can go back and anybody that's watching, please, please sign up to the email and text notification if you want to be involved.
And as a note, two, I think two different rental companies have subscribed, which is pivotal for our actual rental people. Maybe normally like if it's a guest. Maybe normally, like if it's a guest, it gives that avenue of, you know, like a Carolina cab and rentals to let their guests know.
Good.
That's great.
And the town of Seven Devils hosted the Watauga County Mayor's and Mayor's launch on January the 8th, and had some great discussion, and hopefully we'll get some things resolved. Our Parks and Recreation meeting is scheduled for today, we had it this morning, so we got that one. We have a new chairman, and Moreno Fernandez is now the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee. We have a planning board meeting scheduled for January 16th at 5:30, a TBA meeting scheduled for January 23rd at 9:00 a.m., and a board of adjustment meeting scheduled for January 23rd at 5:30 p.m. Town hall will be closed from Martin Luther King Day on Monday, January 15th. And one more thing that was brought to my attention yesterday is the North Carolina Rates Bureau has requested up to a 42% increase in homeowner insurance. Coverage of Watauga County actually falls in the, their request for, Watauga County is actually only 20.5% increase. So, I will ask Hillary to put this on the website so that every, all you guys can view it. They're, they're holding a public hearing and there's four different ways that you can make your voices known about the increase in, the proposed increases in property insurance.
These are the allowances? They allow them to charge?
These are premiums. Your premiums.
But the insurance companies are the ones that initiate the premiums. But my understanding is, the state says you can do, in this case, 42% more, except the insurance company.
What, the, the insurance company has asked to raise it 42%.
And they think, and if they agree, then it more likely.
Well, the last time this occurred was in 2020, the insurance companies requested to raise it 24.5, and the Bureau settled for 7.9.
And probably everybody's insurance went up 7.
Probably. So, but these are just for, you know, I know, as we talked about earlier, everybody pinching pennies, this is the way to make your voice heard before that's about to dawn. So, we'll make that available.
I know when I complain about my insurance increasing to my agent, the response I get is, well, that's North Carolina, that's North Carolina increased it. And I said, no, 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 no. They increased the allowance, you all decided to increase it that much. And that's, that's, that's the difference.
Well, the, their, their excuse is the values of the property, which, which was, you know, everybody received a stunning increase in property values, also a stunning increase in net worth. But Donald talks about the net. Work or it's the.
Taxes and interest.
Exactly, interest.
And also construction costs.
Absolutely, yeah. Everything's.
What did I recount this for?
That was the state.
7.6.
That only asked for 7.6, and Watauga asked for 4.
Well, no, these are the rates for those counties that were proposed increases.
Well, that's what I knew.
Yeah, so, I, I, this, this will all be made available to you guys, and I can email it to, to you guys to review, and it's got a table of what counties, coastal counties, it's 9.4, so, I'm glad you don't live on the couch.
And you said there are opportunities for us to?
Yeah, there are ways to, you can attend in person, you can email, and you can.
How, how do you let everybody know?
Hillary, she'll put this on the website somewhere that we can direct people to, if they want to make their voices heard.
The North Carolina Department of Insurance, I have to see this on the Watauga online Facebook page, and it's a link, and so I did a little research. The reason I wanted Jonathan to make everybody aware is because the public comment is, I think February 6th, 2nd ends that, that date, which is way before our next town council meeting. And I kind of thought, you know, I don't know, our voices would make a difference. And I know even on the first, although, one of the things that we have seen have driven up our cost of short-term rentals, that maybe in avenues, you know, as a town or as individuals, it's like. Rates, but the prices have gone up substantially because of this influx of pipe of fire. I mean, I'm not planning on selling, but all around me is up. You know, we're vacant property, we're absentee owners, you're more likely that something will go wrong, they burn ashes on deck, or they aren't paying attention to the frozen pipes. You and I are paying for all of that. So I'm just, as a consumer, I'm fit the same way as anybody in the room, but I didn't know. I wanted the town council to be aware, because I know that's an issue here in your town.
What is the, uh, league of municipal towns, are they responding to?
I've not heard anything from that, I believe.
I mean, that's certainly, that certainly is the loudest choice that we have, is a lot, and the public hearing will be a lot.
Yes, sir. But there are ways, if you don't want to travel wrongly, to, to make comments. That's it for this one.
Question, question. What's, what's on the agenda for the board of adjustment?
We had a violation that they are, appeal.
Staff appeal, staff decision, staff decision appeals, I understand.
A what?
Staff decision appeal.
So we make the decision and then go to the board, if they do, don't agree with our decision, go to the board.
So any administrative, administrative decision based on the ordinance and the, and the petitioner does not agree, or wants, wants it to be waived or changed, whatever, that, that would be the normal procedure.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any other comments on? One, on one committee report. I, I'm just really impressed with this, and he's, he's not here, so I can say it. The Seven Devils Fire Department, that, that sheet is, is, this report is one of the best reports I've seen, and I'm, I'm very proud to have. We had 23 members, this is a summary for the month of December. They had 23 members combined for 82 hours of training. Annually, for the past year. We had 31 members participated in over 1,750 hours of training. That's remarkable. I, I know that a lot of this is, is required as far as the numbers, but we're so fortunate to have the number of people that have signed up to become an EMR. We're all safer for it. And, and I tell you, the, the involvement time that you've had, and the hours that you've spent in, in with the training, I appreciate it, I'm sure I'm speaking for the whole. Council, I'm very proud of our fire department in that town. And speaking for the whole town, too. Comments on other?
I have a question. How's the way we have coming along?
We have the poll, we're now just waiting for the camera to arrive.
Okay.
And then it will be installed.
And where is it going to be installed?
Where can we find a way to put it?
Is he on what, on ski you go?
It, we're going to try to put it on a town road, that way we don't have to get DOT permission to put it up. So that, that is the goal, it's, I'm not involved in the logistics of the power and the, and the internet and all that, so that'll be determined by where we can get power and internet connection, and where that we can place it, that it's the least obstructive.
It's got to be up as high, up in altitude as, as you can.
That's what we're trying, yeah.
Because that's, it's a totally different, it's arid conditions up there compared to down here. That has really been, that, that road is a real challenge.
Of course.
When it's, when it snows, and lately it's snowing every other day. We're having to, well, the problem is, is we put chat down, then it snows again, so we foul. So then we have no chat down, so it snows again, and then we foul, we put more chat down. And, and I don't know how many tons of that.
But in one-inch snows, it costs us as much as one-foot snows. So, and we've had a lot of one-inch snows, specifically in that area of town, so those guys have been working very hard this winter, we're very thankful for it.
Anne or Lee, any comments from the ABC?
No, things are still cooking, we're having that one month, that has been less, over last year, so far this year, so we're, and moving along.
I would like to share, do you want to, council comments?
Yes.
Okay. Since my name was mentioned several times previously, let me make a couple of comments on behalf, to, to council, as well as those of you who are, who stayed here, I appreciate you doing that. And I wish Mr. Ryan would stay so he could hear this. The comments that I made related to conservatism with regard to historical conservatism with regard to town council was made by citizen bridges, not council bridges, because those comments were made well before, like a grant for town council. This council does a budget, annual budget, starting and preparing it, the budget meetings are.
May. I started in April.
April, May, all of you are welcome to attend those meetings, if you like numbers, as well as a midterm review in, in December, to see how we are with the budget, as well as what's left, what's available, and what we want to do with regard to what's available. Once again, I was not a town council member when that budget review was moved. My comments with regard to conservatism related to the fact that budgets are made, but that, that just says what's available. This town council, I think, has rarely spent all the money that has been budgeted, if I'm not mistaken. Very conscientious historically, very conscientious with regard to how, how your money is spent. And that's the purpose of the comments that I made as it relates to conservatism, notwithstanding the fact that issues, that increased costs have occurred, as we all know personally, as well as the explanation that the town manager has given with regard to the monies that have come in. We, you know, have to, have to budget. And so the fact that you see a balloon budget doesn't necessarily mean all that money is going to be spent, because historically, the council has been very, very conservative with regard to spending, spending your dollars. That's, I just wanted to make that comment from the standpoint of benefit of council, as well as those of you who, who remain, and thank you for doing so.
Yeah, when, when we're lucky enough to get a grant, it involves a huge amount of preparation, literally, an inch-thick type of application. We received a $700,000 grant, and it, those are grant-specific purposes. It doesn't go into the general fund, you can't dump that money into the general fund, it's got to be used specifically for a new water run up on Chestnut Ridge. Same thing with anything that we get a grant for the park through the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, cannot go into the general fund. It has to be used specifically. And it's one, and both of those involve, we come up with the money out of the general fund, and then we get reimbursed accordingly, up to the amount of the grant.
But has to be shown in the budget.
Has to be shown in the budget, and, and, and when Mr. Ryan was saying that it's a 90% increase, it's very easy, I mean, think about what our normal budget is, and think about the additional monies that we, very fortunately, were able to get. And, and that's where the 90% comes from. It's never been, I, I wish you'd need to go on back 10 years and, and, and see it. The other thing the council always focuses on is retention of our employees. We, we have a fine staff, we have a full staff here. In order to do that with the inflation rates, we've given 13% in the past two years as far as cost of living increases. Some towns have even done more than that, some towns have less than that. But historically, we've always managed to give a 4% cost of living increase, even, even when inflation numbers didn't even reflect that, that amount. And, and so, I, I, I think that, that's, that's the value, I mean, our town is as good as our employees. No better, no worse. So if we have good employees, if we have good administration, then we're doing the right thing. I can, I can tell you this, up until last year, we never, the town council never, my 12 years, were never part of the cost of living increase. Up until last year, we, we did that for the town council. It was at the same rate for probably 10 years, as far as I'm concerned. We've been here longer than they can, so it's probably the same rate for longer than that. Even with rate increase, we have been in the job for $166 a month. It's a, but it's a, it's a pleasure to work with the people that we have, and the citizens that we have, to offer input, that offer help, and, and get involved, and get involved, it's a good thing to see. I'll get off my soapbox now.
I have two comments. The first one's, not really sure which way to go, the second one, I feel kind of strongly about, the first one is, look at the town seal, is that something you want to look at and consider redoing for, you know, it shows a golf course and skiing, which you can argue a couple of different ways if it's still appropriate or not. The second one is our town motto, what's it, positive altitude. Come see, what is it?
It's a scare.
It's good, thank you very much. And I think, I think we could do better than that. I, I, I think, I don't think anybody really gets it, it took me five years to really get it, so. I, I feel strongly about that, though, I think we need to sort of look at that, I don't know if that's something that TBA does, or town council does, but.
We could always have a thought process. We did that, remember, we named the park?
Yeah.
The park at Seven Devils. Had to.
That would work for a lot of them, though. But I, I, yeah, that, I.
Well, what is, the seal, isn't the seal registered to the town?
No, I think they're all public domain now.
They're not registered, and then you want to say.
So we can do whatever we want. So the other, the other, this right here is used a lot. With the, and, and we count.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that, yeah.
Except one day, one day Hillary showed me that, and I counted around six mountains.
Who's responsible for that?
It's long crockings.
No one has, no one has stepped up to admit that. But those are good concerns. And one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Okay, so they fixed it. I'll respond, my, my position with regard to seal, seal doesn't look dated to me, but is it worth spending whatever money is going to be spent to, to change it? Now we're saying the fact that we don't have skiing on the mountain, engulf, on the mountain, it is in the area, as you said, there, there are various, various ways you can, you can evaluate that. I'm just not, I'm not, is it, no, not. I would be, the concern that I would have is what's it going to cost to go through that? Is it worth the cost? And at that, at this point in time, I would say no. Because, because the stuff's in the area.
It, it is, I've, I want to take a long-term view, and so if there was a, a, a short-term cost, it's something that's.
Yeah, I had somebody ask me about that today, isn't it? About, you know, about that, that corner, that corner.
Yeah, and, you know, I, like I said, I don't feel as strongly about that one as the town one, yeah, was that what it is, motto?
I don't know, I don't know what, that's that one in, in the curve down there where you see on top of the.
Well, like the signs here. The signs, the signs, yeah, well, the Seven Devils on 105.
Advertising, I think, has a home to that.
Yeah, I've always liked it, I just moved it.
Well, I didn't realize it was altitude for the first five years.
Yeah, that's it, yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah, and, and it's like, it's a pun. It's, and, and puns are, what do they say, what? Most form of humor? I don't think we need to, 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 to.
You don't think it's cute?
I, I wouldn't be surprised if Buzzzy Wolf came up with it. You know, but I.
You don't bring that up.
But.
Not to mention anything, so.
But I would, it just sounds like him, but it's like, you know, it was cute 20 years ago or something, but I was. I think we can do better.
I think we can do better.
We'll be looking for your suggestions.
Yeah, okay, I I'll work on it.
Any other council comments? Jonathan, happy to have you here.
Likewise, thank you.
And I appreciate you coming all the way up.
I just want to ask a question since the appropriate time. Is there any update on the uh Seven Devils sign that's up at the community center, the flashing LED sign? Any update on what's going to happen with that, if it's going to be replaced, updated?
It needs to be replaced when it's. For instance.
Or remove it, or remove it.
I I would be in favor of that.
Something was uh, I thought John Williams was gonna look at that.
We did, he did.
Oh, okay. And anything can be done about that?
It makes, it serves its purpose.
Okay, that can't be fixed.
No.
Okay.
I I will make one comment about that and um I don't go out at night much because it all seem well, but I know what I. That light about blinds and that sign, I mean, it is, it is really, really bright. That's just my two cents.
What's involved in, unfortunately?
I guess so. That's a Kevin issue, oh, it's, are we fine with this?
Well, let's talk about, talk about it for a second since it's been brought up. The information that it, that it uh gives us.
It's not even.
You gotta be quick to read it, if you're going by it, because it's more of a distraction than a, than than an information. But how do we, how do we continue to give information? Through a sign or do we want to do that?
We get more complaints about the sign than we get positive feedback. So I I don't know that going toward the flashing sign is our best avenue to disseminate information.
I don't know, how do y'all feel about it?
Yeah, it doesn't seem appropriate for information area.
Wrong time, wrong link.
Well, we got Seven Devils right.
Seven Devils.
Devils right.
Yeah, when we put it out, my phone was ringing, they said, this is not Las Vegas, we don't need a sign.
The previous sign, I could make it go um, it was dark, I usually have it go dark like at nine and like that.
This one, this one does too.
But I can't do that, I don't think.
Is that all right?
No, I think this one.
No, it turns on too.
That's, I'm sure, I don't, but it's, let me tell you.
Don't think so. Can we make a risk, a a motion and a vote right now or? We don't have a motion, we just have to take it down, end it, make the motion.
I move the poll.
Second.
All those in favor? How's that for a response?
We'll get it promoted.
Sometime.
It it won't be tonight. I just thought that like, you know, I was one of the only ones who didn't like it.
No, more people don't like it than do.
Sure.
Anybody liked it.
Yeah, no, there were some people.
And and I guess people just were not, in other towns, I suppose, people, you know, go to a website or or, you know, call the town hall or whatever to find out stuff, so.
Well, they put up like through the concerts, they put up the.
Well, it will be interesting when the, after the plug is pulled.
Just see, just see.
If anybody misses it.
That's, we'll, we're here.
I know, we should rest, we should maybe auction off the right demo.
I'm sure somebody's.
Maybe a little self improvement, I mean, I don't know how big the whole thing is for the rising sun body someplace.
I'll tell you what, it was an ordeal to put it in, the foundation acting was down, what, three feet? I mean, it's a massive block.
It's not gonna be removed tomorrow.
We will make sure that it's, yeah.
Mode eliminated. Very happy, patients, please. Our guys had a lot going on.
All right, any further comments? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.